You sound like.
For.
All the all for the last two hours of the day.
Some of the guys.
This this camera light.
I thought it was first I thought it was part of the two step verification thing that.
I sent three emails this morning and when I finally had a chance to go. Checks them this morning with page being gone. I saw there were still all in the mailbox and I'm going, oh, that's not good. And the last emails I got were Friday, so I can get them on my phone. I haven't gotten squat all weekend and I called them, I guess, and they're like. Well, you don't have anything and I'm like, mm hmm. It's like. Anybody else have anything? I'm like, mm hmm. But yeah, they had to take the whole Black Duck and then. Exchange down to try to fix that. So hopefully tomorrow.
I've got six o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. Christina, you have the role?
Yeah.
I will dispense with the pledge unless there's a. Reason someone wants to say it this evening. If we can move on to approval of the agenda then. How will we approve tonight's agenda? Thank you, sir.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
I propose. The motion carries. Old business. Our P E R report.
Going to defer right towards us.
Well, what you should have in front of you is a packet of exhibits. These are just a portion of the exhibits that are in the. Blue area engineering report.
And we have these too.
Yep. And then those are some estimates that we'll talk over. So. Uh, the first map is just showing the general location of all the. Facilities that we're going to be looking at, whether it's in city limits or the spray irrigation or the water treatment facility. Now, the second map, that's a map of the existing sanitary sewer. And it's harder to read at this scale. Um, but what you have is there's a lot of it's high plate pipe and stuff there. Uh, there's five different lift stations that we have to address. They don't need ten state standards. And then we're going to be looking at the spray irrigation system.
What was that on the rip station?
Uh, there's going to be some rehab on five of them because we don't need ten state standards.
That's on the lift stations?
That's on the.
Okay, I I caught up. I'm sorry.
Like miscellaneous belving and.
Got it.
Backup power supply and stuff like that. And then to get a skater system on all of them.
Communication and.
All of them. So Mike can monitor them from his phone or computer.
Yep, so you can get alarms at night. So then, um. The next page in the pack of that showing the red lines, that is the replacement of the, um. Collection system, you know, with the pitcher pipe third pipe. That means those were installed probably in the fifties or sixties. And so that's an old.
Or before.
Or look for, yeah, or look for, yeah, for these. And a lot of these were televised in a couple of different years and that we'll see is the. There's treatments and stuff that are penetrating through the joints. There's cracks. Uh, I think there's very good evidence that there's a lot of infiltration. So you're at a point where these things need to be replaced. They've met their effective life. They're used to life. So it's time to replace them. Uh, and then it shows the lift stations that are going to be rehabilitated.
From four now.
Yep, exhibit four. And then we'll get into the irrigation system later. Uh, the next page exhibit five. That's showing, uh, this is what we had on the P P O application for the water system. We submitted that off to the Department of Health, met the deadline and today has a question, though we haven't heard back on that. It'll be a little while before the. U S score and things like that. So what you're seeing here also is a similar scenario. This is pretty old system. A lot of it is cast iron pipe. Which is old. Uh, some of it is three and four inch, which is substandard, you know, for fire flow protection based on kind of state standards, we have to have six inch minimum. Uh, we also need looping so that we can provide better flow in town. It will, uh, provide better quality to the water. Because you'll always have water moving. Um, and so part of the proposed improvements also will be updating the water treatment system. That's been probably served its effective life as well. We're going to rehabilitate the, uh. Well, number five and make that a useful well. Right now it's not useful because of the fact that you've got to manually adjust. Feed rates into the, uh, water treatment plant. It's just not really user friendly. So that's exhibit five.
And then that's tower rehab would be included on that hat as well.
Well. Exhibit six, what we are talking about is, um. Need additional land for irrigation. So looking at another forty eight and trunk, uh, to the east of what we have for existing. And then we would be updating the. Uh, irrigation pivots and all of it, right?
Correct, yeah. It's got a quote from, uh. I think Northern Irrigation, they're not a term. And if you're basically replacing the existing system and then adding another one to the east, so it would be probably land. Acquisition would be required and whether or not that'd be possible, obviously the price, but where that price is. Different, but that would allow the city to have more. Capacity, especially on wet years to be able to discharge, um. Within the permanent regulations and stuff like that.
Your Cory's problem.
Uh, you know, east is, uh.
Anderson.
Now, just I had it until you said that.
I'm surprised you're coming up with stuff.
Oh, I can't think of it.
Okay.
West is north and east is, uh.
East is province.
No, no, the field. Um.
Somebody else.
Benson, Benson, sorry. You better go west, probably. So that's just a quick overview of in town, what we're talking about for, uh, needed infrastructure. Needs, um. So then, uh, do you have the sanitary system or the water system?
We have both, uh, sanitary. I think that is first. We'll do it in the agenda.
So then what this does is it just goes through. And gives, um, estimate of what it's going to take to do those deficiencies that we have in town. So you'll see that, you know, the collection system, that's about three point six million. Uh, the pump stations, that's over eight hundred thousand. Uh, the irrigation, that's two point two million. And those are the three along with. Those are the three. So that totals the six point six million.
Yeah, it's C I P P collection is cured and placed, um, basically a lining of. The sewer and stuff like that. Uh, no one likes to see alternates to show that. You're not just being one dimensional and biased about exactly what you want to do to show a cost analysis. Well, lining is not going to be possible and all with the condition of the sewer veins because they're. So cracked up and stuff like that. You can't bridge over bigger gaps and, you know, a couple of inches and there's definitely. Lots of gaps in there. Um, plus you don't add any structural strength to just like a poly liner. So it'd be like for preventing infiltration and. Flow, but it would address the structural issue.
So we've talked about that before as a mouth, but now we'll, we'll be.
Yeah, it's with clay is pretty tough. Um, a lot of times I'll do it with concrete pipe and stuff like that. Especially storm sewer because there's so much. Thickness in the pipe that you can bridge over areas that are chumped and stuff like that.
So and again, the sanitary sewer, the victory pipe thing has met its use for life. It's time to replace it.
So this costs, uh, uh, for the sanitary sewer, this three point six million. That's digging it all up, all the streets up and replacing.
Correct.
And that's with. A catalyst on top of it.
Yeah, so that includes, uh.
Sewer.
Restoration. Um, so for a P E R, you're submitting to rural development, to what for finance, you work with rural development on a lot of other. Things, um, and typically they'll. Fund a loan grant or whatever up to fifteen foot restoration. So if you're doing both pipes in the same street, you know, you could be looking at. That combination for up to like a thirty foot, which is the width of most of the streets and some of them are obviously wider. Um, and stuff like that. But yeah, so there is. Plenty of that in there for your restoration.
So, you know, all said and done for the sewer, uh, component, that would have been at six point six million dollars. And then when you have the nice. The sanitary sewer, that's the sanitary sewer. That's. That's not the whole product.
No, I don't know. The square lines.
Yep. And then what you have behind this hot page of the summary sheet, what you have behind that, there's a little bit of breakdown of the different. Uh, components that we'll find at all. And, you know, they're asking place, uh. Treatment, that's something that, um, R D just needs to see this, you know, that's not going to use. So are there any questions on the sanitary sewer at this point? Now this, uh, what was it, two thousand and five? That's when the original application went in through the P P L on sanitary, you said?
Yeah, I I think it was for a different project, but, um, yeah, there's one else.
Yeah. So we'll work with them to see if we can update pathways on, you know, the information we have here. It does have a good score associated with it.
Yeah.
Uh, put it in a fundable range. So.
So this is rural development funding, which is, um, through USDA. And what Tim is talking about with P P Ls is actually for P F A, which is, you know, sort of public facilities funding. So generally, um, towns under a thousand will be funded by rural development. But if you're not applying for P F A funding to, you're not going to. You'll apply for it later. So applying to all of them, I think they go with what we're doing.
Yeah, generally what you do is you put the applications and then they get together in September or October and talk about who has funding and who can do what for projects. And sometimes there will be a. You know, sharing of resources or projects just to see what they can get funded. So.
Yes, they are typically funded by state, right? Yeah, yeah. Well, they didn't do the bonding bill, so.
No, they're sure. Oh, I didn't get to see them again.
No.
Okay, so. Lot of work on the sewer. Any questions on that? Okay. Then what we have is the water. We had taken a look at this a little bit, um. At last council meeting, uh, we got the info to the private priority list. And I just see the water portion of about ten point two million dollars. And there again, that talks about, um, upgrading the water treatment facility of about three point four. The distribution at six point four and then elevated water tank at four point fifty. Any questions on that? So this is a lot to take in, but just wanted to kind of give the council an update on where we're at with the numbers. And funding is going to be a must. So. So, uh, see what happens.
One of the takeaways too, I mean, you're looking at. You know, if you did absolutely everything this year, you're like sixty and a half million dollars. Now. It may happen that way where you have sixteen and a half million, but if you don't include it now in the preliminary reports, you can't include it later. So this would be pretty much, you know, all inclusive at this point. And then if things have to be cut later on that are maybe. Still have usable life, but then for affordability purposes, um, that's something that we look at once. The funding is. In the discussion for R D and stuff like that. And then for most cities, you can, you know, compile different funding sources too. So it'd obviously be something we'd be trying to do. To like small cities and there's many other supplemental grant funding sources that can be added on to. Chip away at the loan a little bit or entry costs and stuff like that.
So the goal is to keep working on the report to that file and as we. We will just got these numbers back. Not that one, you know, so we'll. Update the report and get that to the council at some point.
Yeah, the big one we were weighing on was the water treatment one because. The current system is a pultronic's system, which is a. Not a very widely used system, like maybe in other states, but definitely not around here by any means. So. Getting partsing like that is quite difficult. So this actually would retrofit the plant to a Tonka filter or Tonka plants, um. Which is much more widely used around the state and much. More local, um. And that's why the price comes in higher. We like ripping off the old components and putting in the old plant, but still utilizing the buildings, but.
That's something to. Take this inventory and back the rain like a priority listing.
That's what the.
Um, or who who does the priority? Yeah.
How do we? Well, for the funding side of it, it'd be like the applications that we submitted and then you would accrue points. Every year automatically. And then you'd also accrue points based on other needs, like. Health and sanitation needs and stuff like that, or like, um. If you're having to shut down water for long periods of time frequently. She would fix and stuff like that. You can justify it as, oh, we're having residents about water because of the engine system and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Um, so those are all things that factor into the priority of how quickly it can be funded. Um, now as far as. Which items in particular, which I think is more and more you're asking. Uh, there's other tables that will be included in the report too that show like the useful life of everything. And then it breaks down like your operation costs too. And then we'll show your, what your affordability is. So ultimately. Then R D is never going to fund a project that would ever bankrupt the city. They work and find them sweet spots. Um.
Well, it comes into play with a little bit of grant, then one dollars and then. Through a have to be a reassessment of your raise that you're charging the residents also because it has to be sustainable. So that will be part of the probably going. And, you know, I think. I don't know that they're going to pick your project. I think it's just more of this is all priority. It's just a matter of where does the money come from and how do they get it? And that'll just be.
So during implementation of a replacement project, the existing lines would be maintained while the new lines would be played.
Yeah, you wouldn't have any loss.
People would wait for weeks or a month.
Probably very minimal. There would be, you know, minor shutdown, so construction, but hopefully nothing more than. Maybe up to twenty four hours at one time, um. But what if they're doing a whole water system, so they run temporary water to everybody throughout the summer, um, so you wouldn't have any disruption. Um, and then for sewer, it pretty much dig it as they go and just keep reconnecting it. And you wouldn't have any, yeah.
Yeah, obviously, there'd be a lot of people.
No.
Yeah, no, there's a temporary emergency eyes in place. And same with access to their homes. They would have access every morning and every night.
And that's from an emergency standpoint too. We have to ensure that access. Fire, your ambulance.
So a lot of work to do. There's a lot, like you said, it's a lot to take in.
It's a lot to take in.
But Black Duck is not unique, you know, a lot of smaller communities have limited budgets and a lot of units, so.
Typically the loan period on the stuff in about forty years for through R D.
Rural Development. As you go through P F A or others, then it's thirty, twenty to thirty.
Everybody having questions for? Remember Phil?
Studying.
Thank you, guys. Uh, no, I will just keep moving along. Move to the. If you would stop. Proposal. For the libraries.
Yes, I can. So, um. Christina. Wrote this wonderful letter for the board. And we requested that they call a special meeting on Wednesday. It'll be Wednesday.
There should back open about kitchen's board.
Oh, kitchen's board, yes. So first, um. During our last meeting, uh, Kristi and I discussed getting ahold of them right away. Um, Christina did reach out to them and we got the proposal. For the, um. The study to be done by what's, uh. It's a call, if I can even think. The feasibility study, uh, to be covered by the. Appropriations. And that was passed. By kitchen on the sixteenth.
Okay.
So then. I asked the library to pull the special meeting so they could vote on it as well before our June. So that'll be Wednesday, a special meeting that will happen.
Do you hope we're done?
I will be attending Zoom and that will be in the cities. But yes.
And we're anticipating they'll approve it?
Yes, I I've anticipated we will approve it, um. When we met with them, Christine and I met with them. Last month, yeah. And. You know, that they're. Their desire to move forward with doing something to the library to improve it, um, that desire is great. Um, obviously their first choice was I'll do a different building, a bigger building, but we just can't do that. At this point, so. Um. They were in favor of moving forward. And not waiting for a building to.
Yep, I just want to make sure we keep in mind that we're holding up. Study on the city hall.
That's why we've got that meeting. It's why it's on Wednesday. That was pretty good. Now, I was happy that they. Were able to move so quickly because it's. Sometimes very difficult for all of us to get together, so. So we will have. More to come.
When we are on to. The conveyance, the real bank.
Uh, I spoke with Rachel today from the co-op. Uh, she heard from Mendat's, uh. Section that approved the last section that's conveyed. Um, they have culinary approved the additional land. Needed a letter, a new letter from the city saying that. The city obviously approves it. Because that was the intention anyway, was to go all the way across. Um, so I just sent that out to Rachel. About five thirty. Um, once they have that, they'll move forward. With that conveyance process again, so they'll go through the same one as the larger section of land. So I still anticipate this is going to take a month before we get to a purchase agreement with, uh. With a lot.
And the duck.
So I I had, uh, reported at the last meeting that I did, um, apply for a Blandon grant, uh, to help. Offset the costs for the finishing off of the historic location. Um, I have since had a, um. A one on one with the, uh. Grant. Division of Blandon in regards to this. And have also received a formal quote from Pierce Concrete regarding, uh, our. Tentative plan to remove all the sod and foot on the ground for real service out there. Um, Brian Pierce gave us three options. Of which. Far exceeded our original. For footage expectation, um. It was, I was very gracious talking to the London that blended because I kind of told her what had happened. I. Put in the grant thinking it would cost about three grams to do the concrete. And we forgot zero. I think. Um, and told her that we way under budgeted what we thought. Um, they do have about eighty five applicants. For this round of their grants. But she was, uh, very open to understanding that that was a. A one off and she's going to see if we can get some additional money than what I originally asked for, which was like twenty five hundred dollars. So she said might not be able to get it all to you, but might be able to get some, which would be nice. Um, I've also had some conversations with, uh, one of the volunteer firefighters and. They want to do something on that corner too, and in memory of all of the firefighters from Black Duck. And, um, have encouraged. Discussing, um, maybe the relief will chip in with that. Part of the project. So right now we have enough to complete the restoration of the statue. What I'm working on right now is the finishing off of the site. And that's where. This, that's where this report is coming to you guys, but. So I had great hopes of doing like a some stand concrete. Brian was great. He's like, maybe we can put. Flowers around the duck. Um, so all of this quote includes some type of finishing off of a permanent. Um. Area to. You know, make that area look very attractive, um, as well as direct water off the buildings correctly. Um, including fixing the two blocks of sidewalk. On the north side of Margaret there that are all busted up and. It is, um, part of our property because it's adjacent to a piece of. Land the city owns. So these prices include that too. Which are desperately needed.
Yeah.
So I'm hoping to find enough money, but that that is my, was always my hope is to do. Uh, concrete there.
Have we located the doing the paths down at the wayside too then?
So.
Do it.
No. Once I got this quote. I kind of backed off from doing both locations. So I'll see what kind of money I can get. Additionally, um, I mean. Right now I have, like I said earlier, I have enough to do the statues as the quote has and the bid is coming from Johnson Conservation. He could get in there and start working on the historic duck and find something that he still needs to fix that he didn't anticipate. That could cost something more. I can't imagine who would do that, but, um. I talked in speaking with Blandon, they they knew very well. Um, what had happened to the, uh. Um, Paul and Babe statues. And what they found. Inside Paul and Babe when they. They first did the restoration before his hand fell off. I've heard stories like there was, um, a mouse nest in that built in in Babe. Because they found a way to get in and no one knew that. So hopefully when we get this historic duck done, we won't have any future problems. Very interesting stories I've come across.
I've got nothing new on the stage. For funding for that, when that been planned and plotted.
Thank.
We're at a point though with that where we can just.
Yeah.
Take it off of any future stuff, though, can't we? I think we kind of came across that last time we thought. We can just be done with it at this point.
Well, if the money goes back to the family. Or gets directed into a different area, that is a conversation that still needs to be had.
Yes.
Okay.
So then if you leave it on there, it'll still stay. In my head. In the hall.
I've had an additional meeting with Phil Trami Electric. We've been moving forward with the process of all the applicants. Um, have a narrative draft for them and USDA completed. We have another meeting tomorrow morning with them, uh, by Zoom. Uh, to keep going on it. It sounds as though the project actually does qualify for grants. Dollars in the Red G program. Um, which is good. That helps Phil Trami Electric, um, it also. Um it also helps what kind of amount of loan we might get. Some of it might be grant instead of all loan. So we're pushing forward the process. As much as they wanna get done and have an application done by June thirtieth, I've told them why we're. Holding back a little bit and they understand that, anything that we can do to save costs and the taxpayers, they're. They're welcome to work with us, so. We're not gonna be done by then, which is, I've explained to them, I've explained to them the timeline and why we're. Um not getting it done yet and they understand that they would like, even USDA encourages us to get it in on June thirtieth, but they also understand the. The reason why we're holding back.
Local option sales tax.
I have nothing new on this next.
Yeah.
Uh maybe next month I should, I should.
I'll back your mic.
It's gonna be quite some time before we hear anything new on that, they have to go through all their. Process of everything at this point now with. What exactly they're gonna do or how they're gonna do it and all that, and I know that they're gonna be looking at putting. That lease together that we spoke about last time, and we're gonna do that so that you guys can take a look at that. So it's, it's gonna be quite some time, I'll let you know, I'll make sure Christina gets it on the agenda when I do know anything.
Okay.
It's gonna be a few months for sure, it sounds like. Were they?
Yeah.
Oh, good, yeah, it's, you know, it just gotta go through all the proper channels and everything needs to be. Set in place before they start really doing much, um. Boy, I can really tell you is, I met with him again over there, we kinda laid it out, put some lines down. Figured out where the concrete pad would be, where the power is gonna come from, size of everything, um. Essentially, if you guys have been over there lately, it will be right where the Boy Scout can trailer is right now. That's the best spot for it, that we're able to keep clean all the way along and close for traffic and everything, but. Looks like it should work out pretty well, they said though, I won't know anything new for at least a few months, it was answered.
Okay.
The Public Works Building.
Punchless.
Punchless.
I believe we are all done with the punch list at this point.
One aside, the FRP.
Other, yes, other than that, because that's ongoing. Can't really see what it's gonna do.
Right. They wanna wait till it got humid or something, right?
Yeah, can't just see what more is gonna bubble or pop or turn on, um. The windows definitely are not leaking anymore, so that's good, um. The concrete fixed for the wash bay. I'm not sold on, but I don't know really what else can be done there. With with what it is, um it's definitely better. And honest kinda is what it is, it's better than it was. Uh the lighting issue has been fixed. That's. All different kind of ball wax there, it wasn't really so much to warranty. And. An oopsie. For somewhat um. Onings were put on the north side of that building to cover the man doors. Three-inch screws were used, which should have been short enough, one of them apparently touched by. A hair essentially and shorted the system out, so we have a bill for that. Is what it is, we did everything we could, used the right size, put it where we thought it would be fine. Was what it was, all I can really say on that. That is fixed. Um without having it in front of me.
Pressure valve.
Pressure valves all fixed, good, taken care of, no longer leaks and uh overflow was added just in case it does.
The boilers.
Boilers.
Boilers seem to be operating properly too.
I'm Jay. Or excavator operators.
Okay, so I can now. Have the council of. A better update, I don't know where we're at with that, the public works committee met again this afternoon, um. Essentially, we have a situation where uh we would like to take the. Backup loader and return it to CAT, of which we are well within our, the agreement to do so. And subsequently purchase two new pieces of equipment. Within the financing parameters of the current lease agreement. Um we have a reduced cost annually to CAT of ten thousand eight hundred dollars and some change. Um the way that agreement was finished off in two thousand twenty after a bond council and legal council and CAT financials. Finished it off, there would have been a buyout at the end of about thirty-eight thousand dollars. Which subsequently would have reduced the value and equity of the unit if we kept it the full term of the five years. So I've been negotiating with CAT and they are. Welcoming to take the current unit back after two thousand twenty-four. Remove the buyout, remove the two thousand twenty-five um uh payment. If we are interested in purchasing these two new pieces of equipment, of which I've given you an email with pictures. Um the Public Works Committee reviewed the CAT financial lease options, lease to purchase options. And two options from Ellers Art Financial Advisors and came up with a recommendation to uh. Do an equipment bond for seven years with Encella Bond. Pay for the units, both pieces outright. Um I have provided to council that schedule. The first payment would not be until August of two thousand twenty-six. But we are essentially looking at uh bonding or levying, excuse me, for um. So price every year. About another twenty-some thousand dollars. On top of what the current price was for the current unit, so an annual. Property or principal and interest payment would be about thirty-two to get two for uh fairly newer pieces of equipment. That would be much more efficient for public works, um. So that's up for conversation now. And I'll field any questions and hopefully the rest of the public works committee can help. I got, forgot something. It's important to note that. Equipment leases or equipment finances are pretty high right now, if we stayed with CAT, it's six point nine. Basically seven percent. Ellers is recommending an equipment bond, it's still five point two five percent.
So the picture is a one piece of the picture.
That's all there was in there?
Yeah.
I apologize then, I thought that email had both of them. I, I don't have them to give you right now. I printed everything I thought I could give. Yeah, sorry about that, Don. Um. But Mike spent through them and seen them, so if he needs to speak to any of them, I think the only one. It looks like the backhoe is in that group, is this, no, that's, that's.
Which one do you got there, just hold it up, I'll say real quick. That's the excavator, I've actually put eyes on that one, that one is sitting in Vamiji, if you get a chance and you wanna look at it. It's sitting at Ziegler in Vamiji right next to Lake's Fountain. It's a really nice machine in good shape. The wheel loader. That is not local and I have not put eyes on it physically, I have looked through all the pictures at it and talked to Ryan about it. Both machines are in excellent condition.
Nick and I are both on the Public Works Committee, so we know what's going on, so if you guys have any questions now.
Well, in the interest of cost-saving funds, if the lower interest rate that was built with. By bonding versus it's hat. Come up with that money from taxes, we could pay five point two five percent versus seven plus cap. At the age of our underground utilities. Having good equipment is a necessity, is a necessity.
We're gonna need it.
My utilities are probably older than the cities.
Yeah, what's that?
My personal utilities are probably older than the cities on the street and uh. Digging them up would be quite costly and. Better equipment you have, the quicker it is and the less time spent.
Worthy to gentlemen, anything you wanted to ask?
No.
Don? I know you're just now looking at it.
Uh. Public Works Committee discussed. The financing options pretty intensely today. Um knowing the value and demand of the equipment. CAT will hold the units for us, but not for very long. Uh provided what it takes to bond, um it. Is something I need recommendation from the council to at least. Get that ball rolling because it's gonna require. Um more than just resolution, I may have to have a public hearing, I can't remember. The last equipment bond I did was for Gulf equipment. So I just wanna make sure we do our due diligence, I mean, we've discussed the the length of. Life of this equipment being up to twenty years, um provided what the existing backhoe loader replaced. It's gotten us by, but it's not efficient enough.
I think it's worthy to note too that. If we don't go forward with this equipment purchase. We're still on the hook for another fifty thousand dollars still with the piece of equipment we have. Whereas we can turn that in, wipe the plates or wipe the slate clean. And and go for the equipment that is going to work for us. And and has a longer lifespan to it, so I think it's just. You know, trying to be fiscally responsible here and look at everything, I think that means to be noted.
And yeah, we're kinda back into a corner a little bit because. There's a balloon payment coming up.
I didn't. Yeah.
Yeah, we have one more payment to make in twenty-four as well as a balloon payment, thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Which is what turned us kinda upside down on this whole thing and and changed routes and tactics here.
Right.
So we're trying to, you know, with being in contact with CAT themselves and, you know, they're working real hard with us and we're working with them and this is. What everyone has kinda come up with as best case scenario here on what we can do. I think that's what the Public Works Committee is really looking for tonight is, is knowing. If we can move forward with this or not.
Yeah, I think CAT um told Mike that if we sign the PA, they can hold it for a few more weeks, which would give. The council and Ellers time to start developing the equipment bond, you know.
Cause again, this, this is used equipment. It's near new, but it is used equipment and it's equipment that's in high demand in the construction industry. These, these pieces don't last long, they're not. They're not gonna hold them for months on end for us when they could be turning them over, selling them privately and making. A lot more money than what they are with us. We obviously get a a pretty discounted price on equipment being a municipality.
Well, does this backhoe?
Does it, I I don't have any other information in front of me. Computers have been down today, it doesn't say in your residence packet there what year it is.
The only one I printed was the.
There's no information on it.
No, I'm very sorry.
It's, it's within a couple of years, Don, I know that. I I believe, now this is completely off the top of my head, but I know I'm close. That one machine has roughly eight hundred and some hours and the other is just over a thousand, so. I mean, we're talking, if you could see those pictures, they're probably a little blurry. But on a machine like that, when it's still shiny and yellow, it's been taken care of and it hasn't been working very hard or very much.
Are you, your feelings, whatever. Pursuing the bonding, obviously that's a lower interest rate. To see where we, even mine, that all this has to come from the taxpayers and if we can get, we shave a couple points off, I suppose, money we have to spend on. Taxes and um they're in high demand. Pursue the preliminary work and the bonding, I guess, and communicate to CAT that we're doing that, make sure they know we're moving forward.
But that's what I would like, so that I can at least put our name on it.
As I said, our infrastructure is aging, well, I think Christina and I, you have your collective. Yes. As we've heard in the P E R. For the record.
Yeah.
The the C in VCP is clay, which is extremely outdated and collapsible. Very important we have to dig it up and repair it.
Somebody broke down it again, better.
I, yeah, I apologized on I. I did the best I could with the timing, not trying to withhold information. If I get it together, I will forward it to you. Um, but the public works committee looked at all of the equipment in both meetings and agreed that the pieces were. Um, were in the worth what they're asking.
In the meantime, if you have any other questions too, now I'm happy to talk to you.
Yeah, I mean. Everybody's around.
Okay.
It's just, I don't have.
I I know you don't want to vote yes or no right right at this time and and that's not what I I'm asking for right now, so. On to the next.
Uh, I don't have anything to report. Joe Lengel has not reviewed the ordinance or if he had. Or if he has, he hasn't gotten back to me yet. Max. He's got quite a big case going on in another city right now. That's taking up some of his time, so. He assured me last Friday he would look at it. So hopefully I'll have something for you guys. At the council meeting.
Thought that was in our agreement that we were supposed to come first.
Uh, if you knew what he was up against right now, you'd understand.
All right, on to new business because this gentleman's been sitting here very patiently waiting for us.
Yeah, I just first. Like to introduce myself. Uh, my name's Ethan Anstein. I work for Mindot. I'm a project manager of the Munchy Office. Just coming today to talk to you about the overall project, but in specific. Um, it's the lighting at Summit Avenue, but. Before we go into the lighting, maybe we'll just kind of touch base on uh what this project is that been done. Uh, tenants is scheduled for two thousand and twenty seven. Um, it is a flex job, so um, Mindot has funded it in uh twenty twenty eight. Um, built the schedule to uh deliver in twenty twenty seven and then actively we look for funding. We do now in twenty twenty seven to try and deliver the project. But I would say twenty twenty seven is actually edge from stone, but uh that's a good starting point. And like I said, the schedule is built for that. Uh, the work that was involved with this S B is their project is starts by ten strike just south of the. Uh, of the community of the city of ten strike at the center left turn lane just south. Um, of the city limits and go up to uh follow the trunk highway seventy seventy one corridor up until seventy one splits. But then it would continue to go one additional mile on seventy. So um, the work is. Uh, going to be a a reclaim. We just received some funding to up scope it is 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 what it's called, but it'll be a reclaim where the. The matunis is ground up and basically you have a new matunis that's laid. Possible profile adjustment a couple inches. Not talking a whole lot of adjustment there. Um, centerline culvert work, couple culverts gonna be replaced on our line. Um, so entrance bikes, why did you enter the space to replace? So that's kind of the job in its entirety anyways. Specific to this meeting, why I wanted to come today was to talk about the intersection lighting of Summit Avenue and seventy one. Um, was able to talk with Christina a little bit about it. And it sounds like some of the some of the lights or the at the quadrants, one of them doesn't work or intermittently works.
Or east one.
No, those two work.
They two work now? Okay.
Those have been working. Those those haven't gone out.
Okay. Um, I will say that talking with the traffic engineer, they are old. They mean by what we would consider they they have met the useful life. Talking with her, trying to get a kind of idea of. And and you guys know what what's your thoughts about replacing them? Um, currently the traffic engineer would like to have them replaced, but would offer a fifty fifty split on both lights. Uh, the lights and the work involved with replacing both lights for the tear down this manual. You know, or erecting new one with our project. Um, prices are running at least as of late, our projects about twelve thousand five hundred to fourteen thousand per light. So if there's the interest and Mindot has that interest to replace those, then you're looking at. You know, roughly twelve thousand, you know, for the doctor to have new lights.
What uh what roughly is is old per se with lights? Cause the one on the southwest corner was just hit. Two years ago and fully replaced.
Okay.
And at our at our cost, so it's only two years old. So I just wonder, and I know that they're both L E D lights as well.
So that I didn't know that. So that's nice for you to know that. And I can go back to the traffic engineer and talk to her.
Yeah, because there there's. There's been kind of a a an odd thing here with the fact that those lights are on. You know, a state highway, but we we pay the light bill. We seem to pay the maintenance and all that on it. And I know that we've we've put L E D heads on. Multiples along the state highway there. And like I said, the one whole thing was hit. Two years ago or so and we we bought and had a a whole new bull and light fixture put up.
Okay. So I. In this process of my speaking with Ethan, I've done some digging and I can't find an actually an an actual electrification. Of those lights and where they're tied in and Beltrami Electric Cooperative is. Is figured out that the city is not being charged for. The electrification of those streetlights. I don't, you figured anything out since we spoke?
Talking with the traffic engineer and their crew, they came out here and met with Bill Trammy and they followed or they traced the power line back to the city's.
Yeah, I was there.
Real power.
Yeah, they they go.
Goes to the.
Goes to our way, our wayside rest.
It does.
Yeah.
Okay, then never mind. This just doesn't show up on a bill that way.
That's where it goes back to.
Okay. Yeah, that's the last time you and I spoke. And that's why I wasn't aware of that. Thank you.
So I mean, looking at the plan sets that I can find and maybe you guys could help me with some of this, like one of the reasons coming today is um. Old plan sets, you know, what you guys have. For your utilities in that area, cause if I can get a better understanding of what. There are for city owned utilities in that area that's gonna do our or help our design staff to do a better job at uh. You know. Trying to minimize. Minimize not only the risk, but just the impacts to those utilities, but.
Well, we should have that because what's there was just replaced in seventeen. So that should that should be really easy to get you those.
Okay.
Both of those lights?
No, the the underground infrastructure.
Yeah, you're talking sanitary and water.
Yes, yes.
And that so back to the light question, um, I'll go back with that information, knowing that that one is newer, but I would still say. The northeast quadrant one is gotta be, that's gotta be, I'm gonna go off the hip here at thirty plus years old.
Okay.
I mean, unless someone else has a better understanding on it, uh.
No, I know we've upgraded it to, you know, L E D.
Yeah.
But the actual structure itself, I I couldn't tell you.
Okay.
Depends on when the last time it was hit, because I seem to be feeling those off once a year or so.
Okay. Yeah, there's a northeast and a southwest. Yeah, and you're saying the southwest.
Yeah, the southwest was wiped out a couple of years ago.
So to clarify the electrification of even the southwest goes to wayside rest too?
Yep, we're tied together.
Okay, thank you.
And so if it's like a fifty fifty spread and we're replacing, what what, one or two?
Yeah, there's only two lights.
So if we're replacing both. Then are are we responsible for the maintenance of that?
Yeah, so it's a city owned utility, so.
It's inside the municipal boundary. It's ours. Doesn't matter if it's on the state highway or. I think that's what I heard, right?
Yeah, no, the current cost participation hasn't split out in such a manner where if it's a city owned utility, then you guys are responsible for the ownership and me, so.
That's how that happens. We've always wondered that too.
And this product that, you know, project that twenty twenty seven.
I wouldn't get one.
Yeah. I would be in favor of it. If if yeah, the traffic manager doesn't. You know, think that our current lighting is sufficient.
Do you still don't think they'll have, they'll be relocated too?
I would say that for sure, that's. Very, very high probability that that southwest one, which is actually the new one. If if we're gonna do the upgrades to this intersection and that's what you guys have in your packet, it's just kind of a colorful. You know, we're trying to update the eighty eight infrastructure as we go through the small towns and this intersection is, I think. You know, it would be good to have sidewalk crossing there. And so because of the work involved with the boulevard and sidewalk. And the pipe work as well. It's it's very high probability it's gonna get impacted, so it would, yeah.
So is this all that's being done at that intersection? It's just what I see here, the green and the pink?
Well, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to tie back on the county roads. We just don't know how far yet because we're not in the design phase.
And and that's my question. I know. Oh. Was it last fall when I met with someone down there? There was talks of possibly the roundabout or a stoplight going in.
I have, I have yet to hear any traction on that, so.
I probably shouldn't kick that.
Roundabout?
They're gonna reclaim. It's well, they're gonna have to do a mill first in order to um give the contract or something that for two minutes to work back into the mix. But overall, I mean, however much they mill down, then they're gonna have to.
You're not gonna read it at all, go right back pretty close to say.
Correct. I mean, there's talks about we might need a little bit more structural. You know, integrity to the subsoil, so we might have to go up two inches, so. If we go up two inches, you know, we're gonna tie it, have to tie in somewhere. I don't anticipate that being way out there, but. If I can get a better understanding from your guys' plan sets or maybe I'm guessing your consultant here. Provide data on where those utilities are, that's that's gonna help us to um. You know, lessen the impacts, but also have a better idea on, you know, if there's manhole lids that gotta be raised or if there's. I don't, I don't know. I don't actually don't see anything other than maybe manholes adjustments, but.
I I feel like those are actually both.
On either side.
Just outside of what you're gonna need to do, you know, you wouldn't have to raise those. You're gonna be tying in.
Yeah.
You know, clothes.
Should be pretty easy to find.
Okay, I can give you a business.
The actual underground water sewer would be way below.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're not talking.
Yeah, not even. Is the blue pipe here that's solely electrical? Is that right?
Uh, the the blue lines on the picture that you're seeing are culverts that are to be replaced. Um, there's a little small section there by the gas station. We're gonna have to do some sort of bend there. Um, so. You know, and you're looking at three different places of pipe work there.
So that's drainage.
Yeah, I just. I like to at least meet with the smaller communities, uh, I all communities for that matter and just. Talk to them about impacts to their infrastructure, their utilities. Um, you know, obviously there'll be. Some financial dollars that are of the cities, you know, for your own utilities that they're impacted, lighting, water main, sewer. This is all I have at this moment. Um, they not kind of breaks their plan sets and will, you know, thirty thirty percent, sixty percent, ninety percent. And I would like to remind people where we are in the stream of time. We're we're at probably about fifteen percent. You know, once we hit that thirty percent mark, then things get a little bit more clear on, okay, how far are we tying out? Actually, how many culverts are we replacing? You know, are we changing them out? In slopes on.
Yeah, this is the, we're gonna be doing something. Now you're gonna have a much better idea. We should be prepared with what it is.
Well, you know, you should have the.
Yeah.
You should have, you should be able to capture as much time as you can on your end in order to make sure that if you have to. You know, pay for a utility.
Yeah, if there's something underneath there that.
So if the one lighting pole is, you know, a couple of years old and it has to be moved, could that pole be reused rather than funding a new one or?
That's something I should talk back to the traffic engineer. Um, there is a, the cost participation policy does, for Mindot does talk a lot about standard lighting and so. You're talking standard poles. I don't know if that's a standard pole. It's also talks about. How much lumens are are on the light pole in order to qualify for that fifty fifty split, you know, so then you get into. You reuse something and it doesn't really help you out that much because then you're losing, you could possibly lose your fifty fifty split, you know, based on the information.
It it should hopefully all be to spec right there, because it was it was cleared and.
Being as that new, I mean, you probably are pretty confident about it, but I don't, I don't know lights, right? I mean, I'm not the light.
Or traffic. I do remember that, so I paid for that. I, that was one of those insurance terms.
I wanna say that it was.
Around twelve.
Yeah, I think just for the, just for the pole, I think was seventy six hundred, I think.
Yeah, once we had it erected and and everything, I think the insurance claim is somewhere between eleven and twelve, but. So it, it's not a question.
Prices keep going down.
Correct. Construction in twenty twenty seven, so we're looking at numbers today. What will they be in twenty seven?
Do we get the lights right now?
So a- any more questions? I guess maybe on the job itself or, you know, I'm not looking for you to make a decision yes tonight. I mean, if you want, great, but. Just provide you with in information and maybe Christine, you can get back to me.
Yeah, working together with with Seth, Mike and myself will be able to. Get the information you need.
Okay.
I do like the um. The as built and stuff with the these guys.
Yeah, okay, I got business starting to go.
So what is a receiver ramp?
Um, so on the opposite side of I of the. I guess where your trail is um for eighty eight purposes, American Disabilities Act, you have to have a receiver ramp that's compliant, less than two percent crosslop. It's a concrete pad, basically with trumpeted domes on it.
A little orange or, yeah, yellow. The bumps.
Bumps.
Yeah, the slowdowns.
Metal, the metal inlay, basically, yeah.
I do, I think that's a pretty nice improvement to that intersection.
Especially since we've had, you know, more people moving into that. Area over there.
We do have more pedestrian and bicycle traffic. We do.
You guys doing an ice report on that?
No, no, they have not done and they don't plan on it.
I just want to do anything with any speed stuff.
Not that I know of. Good question, though.
Anything else for using?
Do you wanna just email me?
Yeah.
You got business started all or?
Yeah, depends on which one of these.
Okay, well, I'll, if I don't hear it for a while, I'll just bug Christine.
No, I'll I'll actually, you know, like tomorrow.
Oh, that would be great.
That was the weirdest effect ever. It's like three pages long.
Well, as the project gets closer, it's.
Pretty good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Red service inventory.
I'm gonna let Caleb talk about this.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Department of Health, I know we kind of chatted about this before, um, requiring all cities to inventory all. Service lines and all the service lines into basically to the meter, whether regardless of the ownership or not. So we started that, obviously, we got a bunch of billing information from Christina and we made spreadsheets and then Mike could help me. Kind of eliminate some of the communities that are built after eighty five, which are when the lead ban took place. Um, so I'm sure some of you received the letter. Last week, basically requesting a picture of your meter to be sent back to me. And then we'll be determining the pipe type and then if it. Needs further investigation. Then we'll have to hopefully set up a site visit with residents or a in-home visit to try to go down there and see what kind of pipe it is. And if you really can't figure it out after the notices and you can't ever get an inspection set up, you can also say unknown, but.
And this is for just the pipe coming to.
Just the service line.
Between between the, from the main.
To the meter.
To those.
You're not concerned about what's in people's cells, you know? No, I mean.
That's their fault.
Yeah. So I mean, like in black case, you only own the main.
Well, see, thi- this is something that I've struggled with since this very first came out. Because as the city, we only own the water main. We do not own the the junction where it ties into the service, nothing. The homeowner owns from their home to the main and where it incorporates into the main. I've gone back and forth and there's very few of us in the state that are set up like this. Most places own from the main, they own. I've gone back and forth, and there's very few of us in the state that are set up like this. Most places own from the main, they own the first. Oh, six feet past the curb essentially, to the curb stop.
Or the right away, whatever.
Right, so that's, that's where we don't own it. We really shouldn't be on the hook for this. And it's, it's spun circles because there's a few of us like this and we've all had the same question. And nobody wants to answer the question, they, you know, it's one of those just fall in line, just do this type of deals. Um, I, I will say, are you planning on doing another round of mailers?
Up the four.
I have one maybe tweak a little bit about possibly using, um. City letterhead or at least on, on the mailer itself, the return address being the city, something. Because I fielded multiple calls, texts, Facebook, the whole nine yards. Yeah, asking if this is legit or not, and I think if we were, yeah, it, it does have my name on it. A few people said, I, I see your name, but you know how this stuff can be, and it's like, nope, it's, it's legit, it's on the up and up. I think just using our, you know, our letterhead or logo or something could probably nip that.
No, I think, I will definitely do that, if that's the problem that people are having, because the first one just kinda get it out there.
Right, absolutely.
And another thing I'm probably gonna be including is asking people like take the insulation off. The pipe before they send back.
Oh, you're getting pictures with it?
Yes, with the insulation on the pipes and you can't see what it is, so just send them another letter, but, um, but yeah, it's kinda where I like that, and then. So all the funding all worked as the Department of Health, they did have funding in place, and Christina had applied, I don't know, last October, November, maybe, something like that. Um. And then it's kinda weird, like, that you guys don't actually get any money, the Department of Health contracts directly with us, so it's a little bit different, but, um. It's nice to see they don't really have to pay for any of it, so.
Yeah, yeah, I got fielded questions that too, it's like, okay, so how is this getting paid for? I'm like. All the cities are doing it, it's, it's, it's pretty much mandated that using inventory.
The state is essentially paying for it.
They're paying for it, so.
Well, up to like the population of eleven or twelve hundred.
Yeah, for us smaller cities.
From the, from the street, there's a curb stop or you're, you're shut off. And then from there to the house, they can be two different type of pipe, right?
It's possible.
Like mine, mine's plastic.
Right, but this is, this is the standard essentially that the state, I mean, the state set up the way this whole thing is gonna work. And essentially, the best that they could come up with is show us what is between your basement floor and your meter. Show us that. You know, it's possible that someone had a break outside in the yard, you know, between that curb stop and the house. And they tied, you know, techs right onto the old lead, it's possible, highly, highly unlikely to do that, but possible. But if you can show them the inside and what it is, then that suffices for them. Because that, that was an early question when this first started was, are we actually gonna have to, you know. Dig everybody. Put, put a hole in the ground and, and dig and, and verify and, you know.
And then.
Don't need the paint, you'll be all right.
But then I think, um, if there is lead lines in the city, then there will be funding, uh, for private residents to replace.
Right.
That's.
So you're looking for just lead pipe that comes on the floor?
Well, there's lead and then galvanized, um, are the two things they're trying to replace.
Galvanized is bad too?
Cause it has little lead connector, lead fittings, or lead in the fittings to be able to make the bends in the galvanized.
No, it wasn't originally part of it, and then they piggybacked it on there, so.
So when they were switching pipes back in the day, thinking that galvanized was safer than lead and then using lead fittings, it's kind of counterintuitive, but.
So what about copper?
Copper is great, uh, poly's great.
Good deal.
As long as they didn't have lead and solder.
No solder, it's flare joint. It's cause watching the two, it's all one piece. Okay. Do we have anything else? I have one small thing for you. I know, when I, when I do this, it's usually not good. Um, actually, uh, this weekend, finally, after four months of my water plant and babysitting and everything. We, we managed to get in touch with the right company, the right individual. And the water plant is now back operating properly. So that is a very good thing. It's been a lot of. Sleepless nights of babysitting it and in and out of here and running it manually, turning it on, turning it off. Trying to guess when high usage is gonna be, you know, if there were fires, we were always worried, you know. If it was big and they were gonna use a lot of water, somebody had to come in. So we're, we're back to running the way that we should be running. So I just wanted to let everybody know. Do we still have no remote access to the electronics or control, or? Don't need it anymore, that, that, so Caleb talked earlier about Filtronics and how they're not widely used.
Yeah.
Their customer service is about the worst I've ever dealt with in my entire life. Four months of a municipal water plant being on. The verge of going down at any minute, and I couldn't get help out of them. Um. I'm not one hundred percent positive, but a, a lot of what had to do with that is that apparently the company doesn't have a landline. So without a landline, they can't even attempt to dial into our stuff, and our stuff is old and antiquated. And really hard to get into anyways. Um, the company that we used, I'm sure Caleb's familiar with them, was uh, A D two S.
Yeah.
And they're, I don't know what you call those guys, programmers, techies, whatever they are, he came. Um, plugged in and we spent many, many hours going through the system, um, changing parameters. Changing, you know, burnt out spots on the cars. Lots and lots of stuff, and essentially we are back up and running. And hopefully, we can stay running until we have a new water plant. So, wanted to let everybody know, it's one, one good thing that finally came around lately. We're back up and going.
Yeah, it's just silly if they can't dial in, I mean, it's only, it was like two, two hundred and three, it's not like it's crazy.
It's not from nineteen seventy, you know, yep, I, I'm right there with Caleb, I've been frustrated for four months on this thing. So it's, it's up and going now. That is very good for us.
Yeah.
There were some burnt out, so they've got different card sets in this thing, and again, I'm no tech guy myself, but. There were things that were burnt out, there were parameters that. For whatever reason had changed and needed to be adjusted, and it's just the system being at the end of its lifespan, like we've talked, things are starting to go out, and. As long as, now I've got a contact with this guy and he, he really knew his stuff, and. As long as I can keep it going, I'll be all right. So. Just wanted to let you guys know.
Good.
Motion to adjourn. Hey, only pockets, guys.
I thought you were gonna say something over there, Max.
Oh, I just thought it was like. You went to here as long as you wanna sit here, man.
Wow.
All in favor? I, all in favor?
No, only, well, I live two hours. Uh, only hours.
Oh, really? Oh, you don't live near Michigan?
Oh, I, I, I'm over by.
Sorry, I touched it off earlier. God, it's been a day.
You know what?
I know, and I, and my angry eyebrows say everything.